The informational meeting will begin in one minute. This meeting to order and welcome to the Tuesday, June 6th informational meeting here at Carnegie Town Hall and welcome to everybody here. And those of you that are watching the web stream or online as well as at home. First order of business is City Council Open Discussion. Do we have any items for open discussion? Counselor Rolfe?
Yes, I'd just like to report on a meeting that I, on a committee meeting that I'm a member of the UDC Transportation Coordination Committee. And we met last, what was it Wednesday, 24th of May out at the CCOG building. Both Drive to Help and the Buddy System Melissa Gibson is working on. She's doing presentations to a number of different entities and businesses downtown and other places to help promote people with some disabilities to be able to ride the regular bus with some help or maybe just have a buddy to go along with them and that kind of thing. And then the Drive to Help is to help with workers on wheels and that kind of thing, getting people to doctors appointments, et cetera, working with the active generations. And the same thing with Transit Level Training. The CCTTS, which is a transportation, a bus firm basically out of, out of Pierre, is picking up some of this rides for decodabilities and what's the other, other?
LifeScape?
LifeScape, thank you. LifeScape in town. They're, they're now doing 300 rides a week and they're looking at increasing that. Plus they're looking at increasing those times that our system does not run later in the evening, maybe earlier in the morning. And so they're picking up some of that slack and doing it at a very reasonable cost for us. And so we're happy with what's happening with that. And then there's going to be some funds that are, that are looking, or that are going to be available in 2018 or 17. About 200,000, they call them the 53, 5310 program that will allow us to help with some of those funds. Different things, maybe a van, some, some hard, hard assets and some in operations. So we'll be looking at that. But I thought it would be, it was interesting to let the council and the people at home know that this, this thing is working that we put together to try and pick up some of the slack that we've, we've had before. So, good news.
And thank you for your efforts on that. And you're referencing the Transit Task Force efforts. Okay, very good. Other items for open discussion? Okay, Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to take a moment to address an issue that we've heard a lot about in the media. The last couple of weeks I've taken some time to sit down to ask questions of things that have been brought forward to me. If I can, go ahead and read, I want to read a letter from Director Franken in regards to some of the issues that have been brought up. And then I'd like to make a couple of statements if I can afterwards. I did not ask Jill to be here. I wanted to take the time for us to have this conversation amongst ourselves first and foremost. And then see if we can come up with some ideas ourselves to address any particular items that are viewed as needing attention. So if I can, this was addressed to Counselor Kylie and myself, and I'd like to read it on behalf of Jill Franken to you all. Dear City Council Leadership, as you are aware, in recent weeks, there have been a number of stories from two media outlets related to our EMS system. With a spotlight on a handful of the almost 15,000 EMS calls each year, you also know that my department, Sioux Falls Public Health, along with REMS-Aboard is charged with overseeing the quality of services of the overall system. Along with assuring our ambulance provider maintains a contract compliance with the city of Sioux Falls. We take this responsibility very seriously and have dedicated resources to carry out this duty. I am disheartened with the recent media reporting which appears dedicated to painting our ambulance provider as well as our entire EMS system in a negative light. Last year at the same time which ended Paramedics Plus first year providing service in Sioux Falls, these two same media outlooks took on the task of trying to shed a poor light on our EMS system. As I said, it is happening again now. But guess what isn't happening? In 2017, since our EMS system banded together to improve responsiveness, I have received not one complaint to my office from a city counselor, resident, patient, nor from healthcare providers regarding our ambulance service. Again, not one ambulance response complaint. Let me be clear, our EMS system is better than ever. Which segment of our EMS system is fully accredited and received a number of awards such as our most recent Mission Lifeline Silver Plus Award from the American Heart Association? Our EMS leadership team works together to identify opportunities to continuously improve the system such as pit crew CPR and yes, improving turnaround time for the next call when all ambulances are transporting patients through the resource depletion protocols. And lastly, our ambulance provider, Paramedics Plus, has met every requirement asked of them in their contract with the city of Sioux Falls. Will there be times we have more calls and ambulances immediately available? Yes, this is nothing new. As long as we've had ambulance services in Sioux Falls, this has occurred. However, what is new is the EMS system process to meet the demand with expert efficiency. Ambulance responses for each priority must be met with a minimum of 90% of their time per contract. Thankfully, thankfully for Sioux Falls, 90% compliance is not good enough for Paramedics Plus who consistently exceeds beyond 95% for all transport. Emergency medical services should always strive to do their best given any circumstances that are thrown at them. I'm confident that our EMS system is doing just that. But there is no such thing as perfection in the area of medical services. And every time you criticize a single ambulance call or transport, you're criticizing the entire team. Metro 911, police, fire, Paramedics Plus, because this is an integrated system. There are no silos. They all work together and have a role to fill the EMS system. When the EMS system does what we ask of them, and they have, we should lift them up and celebrate this good work, not criticize them. I see firsthand the dedicated work of our EMS system providing excellent service for our community. Thank you to all the dispatchers, police officers, fire, rescue, paramedics plus, and EMTs who are experts in their field and have committed themselves to serving our community this way. You are providing a great service to our community. Keep it up. Sincerely, Jill Franken, Public Health Director. And sorry for the, the length of it. I felt it was important that you heard, heard in its entirety what Jill had communicated with me. And if I may just go a little bit further, Mr. Chair. I sat down as well as Counselor Kylie, was there a handful of times as well, and I've, I've been on the phone with fire, police, health department. And I said, explain this to me. Explain the system. We're not talking about one particular thing. Explain the system to me. Explain to me 980 start times. We saw in the, the media the other day that Patrick Anderson showed that the start times do not start over when 980. It does compile on there. Upon talking with Paul Nederinghaus with Metro, he had stated, come and see it. Come in and sit down. I will show you on the live screen what happens with this. I did, I did review some rip and run sheets, which is the fire terminology of a call log of what it looks like. And I will admit that I, I did not fully understand that. It appeared as if the time didn't start over, but I got to view it. I got to talk to Paul. I got to sit down with him and talk about that. There's been some issues with compliance issues and why are things not being reported? It was about a year ago, I remember Director Franken was in front of us and she stated exemptions. So I pulled the entire contract. I pulled the RFP. I pulled the whole contract. I started reviewing, what are exemptions? What do you mean we exempt things? Is this the industry standard? I needed to educate myself because I was not fully understanding what was taking place. So I looked at it. I looked at the exemptions. I looked at industry standards. I looked at call times. I looked at why are things not being reported? I looked at a sheet that was, was not meeting the time, but it wasn't reported. Why was that? And so I have, Jill said, yeah, sure. Here's all the information. Here, take all of this. So I polled on-time performances with no exceptions, meaning there are exemptions in the contract. If you look at the contract, there are things where it's 200% the call. So for the hour of Tuesday from four to five, how many calls were received last year versus this year? I know I'm getting in the weeds a little bit, but I want to explain that to you. Because if that exceeds 200% of that exact hour from last year, per a legally binding contract, those are thrown out. It's just the way it's done per the legally binding contract. It's the way it's been done with other contracts as well. And that's why you're not seeing maybe one of those outliers in there. So I said this to her, based on her being here a while ago. I said, what if we didn't have exemptions? And she said, well, Counselor, there were exemptions before. There's exemptions now. This is, this is the standard. I said, but tell me how many exemptions do we have? Walk me through the process. She did that. She also provided me some numbers on the call times. If we were to take all those exemptions that are qualified, put them back into the statistics, they still meet 90%. They still meet 90%. And so before, in the previous contract, I asked, was there a fine? Nope, no fines. So that was never there looming over our heads of saying, if you don't respond, you're going to be fined. And that's there now. It's a much more rigorous contract. It's a much more, it's, it's very, I know the word complicated has been used in a negative atmosphere, but it's very complicated. It was very difficult for me to look at it. And it's just a comprehensive map. We have so many groups from fire, police, metro. Metro is the one that dispatches it. They're the ones that have a very strict guideline of how they can dispatch. We have a very comprehensive plan of what takes place. And so I would open it up if anybody else has any other questions or things to say. Me sitting down with Director Franken for myself was so beneficial to say, I have this call that happened on this day. Tell me why it wasn't reported. And she showed me. It met the criteria. Now, if there's something that isn't, isn't, if somebody else has other issues, then I would ask you to sit down. Because if you haven't sit down, you need to do your due diligence and you need to hear it from the horse's mouth. You need to have the respect for them to sit down and do it and not just go on a whim. There also is a avenue to, to, if you have a complaint, there is a CRM process in which you can do a complaint. I know sometimes as I'm outside with my neighbors and people are talking, I've self-proclaimed myself as the Drainage Queen because I have Mark Cotter on speed dial and everyone contacts me for drainage. And so as you're outside and you're moving about, people feel comfortable talking to you and saying, hey, Counselor, what about this? This was my experience. Can you look into this? Go for it. But give the respect to find out why. Not just say, oh, my gosh, what happened? And so I'll open it up. I have a few more things I would like to say at the end. But I certainly want us all to hear the same information, ask every single question. I spoke to Commissioner Barth as well after the last story and I said, hey, what's your beef? Who's your beef with? What's going on? And he said, he says, oh, it's not with the ambulance. It's not with this. It's not with this. I, I have an issue and his issue, as he stated, was with the REMS-Aboard. And I said, let's sit down and identify these. Let's sit down and collaborate. Let's sit down and hash it out and make suggestions. Because we can't just keep throwing more fuel on the fire. We have to identify the issues and move in that direction. So I, I know this was not on the agenda. It was an open discussion item and I wanted to throw it out there for discussion. And then also recommend that we bring Jill and her team in to have a contract 101 discussion for us to all learn about what's going on.
Counselor Urbanback?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Erickson. It's been a little disturbing to watch the news lately and to see, see fake news happening in Sioux Falls, just like it does on the national scene, I guess. So it's interesting to me and I appreciate you reading the letter. I would hope that perhaps Director Franken would share that letter with all of us so that we can read it as well. I agree with you that we do need to come in and have a conversation about that contract. It has been only two years since, since the city council approved that contract. It is in, it's a very detailed document, but it is a public document. There is no reason why we can't be looking at it. And the other thing that I would remind folks is that we're getting a regular report from Director Franken and from the REMS-Aboard about what's happening and that we can look at and make comparisons between that contract and the actual numbers that are happening on a month-by-month basis. That it's our responsibility to read that information that's sent to us and to, to be involved with that. It's our responsibility to have those conversations with people if we really don't understand. It's irresponsible to just spew things out and hope that the, the media just runs with it. It's irresponsible to not do your homework as a city council member. And so I would say, you know, one of the things that was most interesting to me is that, didn't make the printed edition of the paper, but there is a video online where a reporter explains that idea and they call it that derogatory term, that phantom ambulance. You know, when that phantom ambulance goes out, it's really a part of that contract. It is one of those things that makes that system work. And the clock doesn't start over. It doesn't affect that, again, 90 to 95% positive success rate just because they put that code number in there while they're trying to, while they're scrambling to get people taken care of. I think it's a disservice to our, to those people who are, you know, we're, we're just after Memorial Day and we've talked about heroes and the people that, that provide service in our community. It's a disservice to those people that are serving us in that way to treat them as poorly as they have been treated in the media lately. And, and I would bring it back to this team, this group is at the crux of that issue. And so I do, I want Director Franken to be here. I hope that leadership will go ahead and take care of that. I hope that we'll get a copy of that letter as well so that we're able to, to share in that information. But I would also just remind my colleagues, including on the county commission and, and those folks that are on the Metro Management Council. We have reports and we see those numbers all the time. If we have questions, we need to ask those questions of the people who can answer them. And so thank you for bringing it up, Counselor. I appreciate it.
Other comments regarding this? Counselor Selberg?
I would maybe just add, I think Counselor Urbanback hit a lot of what I was probably going to say, the due diligence part. I've been trying to work a little more on this too, since it's been more on the upfront of the news. I've tried to read the reports as they've come out as we should be doing. But I mean, you know, things can always be improved on, but I think the main thing is, you know, when things get in the media and things get out there before you start having things where, you know, careers are on the line, there might be some integrity that's being attacked. You putting a cloud out there on people's view of a very obviously important service in the city. So I think it's something that we do need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on. I need to be doing it as well. And I do want to applaud, what was it, the Drainage Queen? For her due diligence on this, this subject. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Staley?
Well, on the other side of this, I will say that first of all, in doing due diligence, I spent seven hours last year writing in the ambulance, as did Counselor Nicer. I heard things from the employees that, that were disturbing. When we had that contract last year, I asked our, the, the CEO of that, I said, what is the margin, profit margin for, for your business? We don't get to know that. I want to know how many ambulances are being on the street at a time. And I will tell you, I have heard from employees that say there are not enough ambulances on the street. I also wanted to know how many, how much of their ambulance service is being used for non-emergency transport. Was told that wasn't any of my business. And the last thing I was concerned about last year was that we have some kind of mutual aid policy in place, an agreement with these companies, these ambulances that are being called in to take up the call for, for the accidents. And we don't have anything in place yet. So I think it comes down to money. But, but I would say, if you're chastising us for speaking out about a concern that's coming up, that is not good government. We have to be open to scrutiny, whether it's not mowing our lawns or whether it's not servicing people with our ambulance service. So we need to be up for that. And if, if we look at it with a microscope and we say everything's great, then that's better for our community. But to say that we're going to continue to just listen to the inner sanctum about what's going on, it isn't good. And I will tell you that Angela Kinnicki did contact us. We did hear about these instances where ambulances did not show up and it was problematic. So I, I will say, I hope that we're doing a great job. I put out a letter to the editor a year ago and Counselor nicer than I did. I haven't heard from anyone that there was a problem until this came up. But I think we need to be looking at it. Our citizens want us to be looking at it. And to chastise us for speaking about it is, to me, is totally wrong.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I'm sorry that you're assuming that we're chastising you. That is not my intent at all, Counselor.
That's what I've been hearing.
Excuse me. Thank you. That's not the intent. My intent here today is to ask you, did you sit down with Jill? Did you sit down with Paul? Did you sit down with Sedaris and say, why didn't somebody show up here? I, I'm not asking if the media did. I'm asking if you personally?
And I'm telling you that the things that I had a problem with, as I just said, were stated last year. I know those have not changed. Those are written into the contract that we don't get to know the things that I asked for. That's what I've said in the media that my concerns are.
But you also just stated the, the other. So my point, so the non-emergency transport per contract, per a legal document, we have, they have to provide it. It's in their contract. They have to do it regardless on there. Now, they can move people around and do what they need to do based on the priority level calls. That's all questions you're welcome to ask exactly how that works. But I know based on my reading of this, contractually, they have to do transport. Number of ambulances on the street, that's not in the contract. It doesn't say you have to have 10 ambulances. But what it does say, it does say you have to meet 90% rate, exceed, meet or exceed 90%. So if they can do that effectively and efficiently with four ambulances, that's, that's their opinion. If they can do 10 and get it done with, that's their choice as well. Now, if, if this posting doesn't work for the employees or other people, that's not my business to get them to where the, that's the intricates of their business. The instances of not showing up, I took that information and said, why wasn't this on here? That's my question. Why aren't we asking those questions? I do not want anybody to do status quo. I do not want you ever to stop digging. I want us all to dig. I want us all to ask tough questions. I want us to pull people up here and say, educate me on this. Talk to me through this. But what I don't want to have happen is to make a statistic or a claim without asking, tell me why this is the way. Because I looked at it and I said, yeah, it's not in the February. Why is this one rip and run sheet not on February? Tell me why. Well, based on the exemptions per the legally binding contract, it was issued as not being in there. Now, who gets to decide the exemptions? Because that was my thing. Well, can I just say, oh, yep, there is, you know, cars wouldn't pull over and it's exempt. That's not the way it works. It's very rigorous on how you get to meet it as an exemption. And whether we like that or not, that's in the contract right now. It was in the contract before. What I do like is if they're not being held to the standard in which they need to, they get fined. You should be fined if you're not showing up for such an intricate thing in our community. When I call 911, I want you to show up. And if they're not meeting those expectations and, yeah, you're darn right. You should be fined for it. And, and they're fined for it. And there's a problem with that. And so I want to address that. I want us all to ask the tough questions, Counselor. I want us all to sit down. And that's my point of bringing Director Franken in, bringing Goodroad in, whom all of them said, "Come do a ride-along." Brad Goodroad said, "You can do a ride-along in the fire." Paul Nederhuis, "Come do a side-by-side. Sit with us." You guys did the Paramedics Plus already. I haven't done that. I will do that. I've done a ride-along with Chief Burns. He said, "Come in, do it. You can, whatever you need." And that was what was really interesting to me too, because when I started digging into this, based on some of the information I received, I thought I was going to be put at bay. I thought I was going to be like, "Oh, you know, well, Counselor," and kind of, you know, I didn't know. And it was absolutely the opposite. You should see my file of paperwork. Here, whatever you want. Here, take it. Take whatever you need. Here, here's the policy. Here's this. It was fantastic. Now, that doesn't mean I don't have questions and I need to understand this very, very comprehensive system. I do. I have a lot to understand because it's, this isn't in my wheelhouse. I will fully, fully, you know, you asked me something about real estate and I can probably tell you, this, I'm, this is not in my wheelhouse. And so it's for us, it's not to chastise. I wanted to talk about this amongst ourselves and encourage us to bring Jill and those directors forward. That's all this is, is to bring them forward and to share with you what I found in my research. I feel, I can't, I can't do it in the quorum and so here's my chance. Here, here's what I found. I wanted you all to see it. I'm happy to share any of these statistics with you. Most of them are, I think, 19, I think everything is online. I mean, that's where I had staff pull contracts for me and said, "Can you print this for me?" It's not, not, don't take it that way. Take it as, this is our opportunity to learn about the system as a whole and continually make things better. That's it. It's very simple.
Are there any, Counselor Rolfing?
I think it comes down to two things I just wrote down here that I learned very early in my political career, if you will, being part of City Council, and that is whenever I got a call or someone thought something was wrong, I learned that there is always the other side of the story. And after that, I learned that I needed to make sure I knew both sides of the story before I shot my mouth off. And that's, those are the two things I think we're learning out of this and would, I hope we can all do that from now on. Thank you.
Okay, I do have something.
Counselor Staley.
Well, first of all, yes, there is another side of the story and I think a lot of times it has to do with what the citizens have to say. And so oftentimes, I think we get all, and so hearing those stories that Angela Kennicki did about people who, when they're told that the fire department is saying, "When is an ambulance going to show up?" And they're calling back repeated, repeated times and being told that they don't know. That's problematic. But Counselor Starr and I met with our fire chief two weeks ago and we were talking about how the fire department is sometimes, they're feeling like they are helpless because they can't do more. So something that we, since we're having this public conversation, which is the way it should be, because we are public servants here, but allowing our ambulance paramedics to do more. Right now, their hands are tied as to what they can do. And so that's something we can be looking at going forward. But I still, coming back, I think we need to have a mutual aid agreement in place. If you look back in the meeting last year, I asked for this. We don't have contracts issued at this time. I think that would be really a positive thing for our community.
Are there any other comments? Well, I have a few, if I may, just to wrap this up. It's been a healthy discussion and I'd like to classify it as a discussion. It's fine to discuss. It's fine to debate. I don't think as a body, we want to get into the position where we're criticizing or chastising. I don't think, that's what I heard. I did not hear that this afternoon. I heard a concern over a lot of misinformation that's out there about our EMS system, which is a true system, and I'll touch on that later. But in particular, there's been a lot of unjust criticism leveled at our ambulance The numbers do, the compliance rate does tell the story. And regardless of the number of ambulances that are on the streets at any one time, the numbers that I have for Priority One, for the first few months, going back at the beginning of the contract, 98 percent, 96 percent, 96 percent, 98 percent, 100 percent, 97 percent, 96 percent. In fact, for Priority One, Priority Two, and Priority Three, from the beginning of the contract up through this date, there's been only two occasions where the compliance rate, and this includes, by the way, the exceptions that are thrown out. This includes those exceptions. There's only been two times, two times, when it's dipped to 91 percent. It's never gone below, never gone below. There's a number of times where it's been 100 percent compliance. So I do think that the compliance numbers do illustrate that not only are they complying with the contract obligations, but they, they're doing what they profess to do. This is a system of transparency. You just have to ask and the information and the transparency is actually factored into the contract language. It is just, it's simply there and we do need to maybe dig down and search for that. This is a system we all may use at some point in time. None of us are exempt from that. Our family members have used it. Many of our family members have used it, as well as friends. There's not a soul in here. There's not an individual within our EMS system that doesn't want to have the best system possible. We all have a vested interest in this and I think we need to work together collaboratively to identify if there are issues. Let's do that together and identify and truly do that, but let's educate ourselves at the same time. And the Metro Management, I have served on Metro Management for three-plus years now. Not once have I ever heard this come up as a concern at a Metro Management Council. Not a single time. Counselor Urbanback also serves on that and I'd be willing to bet that she would state the same thing. The, and then some of what we've been discussing here is contractual, there's a difference between contractual and operational. We, as a council, our obligation is to agree to the contract and to make sure that the contract is upheld. In terms of operation, that's not our call. We don't set the policies and the procedures for the ambulance service any more than we do for the fire department policy and procedures or for the police department, their policy and procedures, how they investigate crimes or go about fighting fires. So there is a difference and I know that there was some criticism regarding the pilot program and why there wasn't information out there. Well, you know, taking, and with my background in science, you first identify the problem and then you form a hypothesis. And that's what they were trying to do. They were hypothesizing this is a possible solution. But until you've actually had an opportunity to test their hypothesis, you do not let out information as if it's policy. You test it and then you report on your results. And that's all part of scientific research methodology. So I would just encourage all counselors to have a firm understanding of the current contract that exists with Paramedics Plus. You know, get the knowledge, research the knowledge of the outliers, system overload, the 90 percent compliance. And unfortunately, applying criticism to Paramedics Plus is simply unfair unless we have a thorough knowledge of how the contract actually works and how the contract is written. And I realize that the Paramedics Plus contract was passed, passed council prior to our newest members joining us, but it's been two years since the rest of us. So we all have the obligation to learn the specifics of the contract. And I would encourage the council to engage in that process, to increase your knowledge and understanding. And to that end, I would suggest that we have, because it's, I believe, June 29th, Counselor Rolfing, that we have our next Audit Committee meeting and there's going to be an audit of our ambulance provider.
Of the contract.
Of the contract, excuse me. And so at the 29th, we'll get, I would encourage everybody to participate in that process. And prior to that, with your permission, I would, I would ask potentially our own Audit Department to come forward with a Contract 101 learning session for us with assistance from Health Director Jill Franken to educate, help educate us. And I do know for a fact that right now, we don't have anything on next Tuesday's agenda. So for informational, that'd be a possible date that we could do that or we could do it later, but I think, I would think it would be best to do it prior to the Audit Committee's work on the 29th. As I mentioned before, the EMS is a system. It's made up of Metro, Metro 911 personnel. It's made up, made up of the police. It's made up of fire. And yes, it's made up of our ambulance provider. They all have key roles and the system cannot operate just on one leg of that. They all have to work collaboratively together and they do. I mean, the, again, the compliance numbers reflect that. And I think it's important for the citizens of Sioux Falls to know that they have an EMS system that is not only functional, but it's functioning well beyond the minimum performance standards that exist in their contract. It includes highly professional, well-trained, well-equipped individuals and a well-equipped system is in place. They serve with distinction and they have served many, many lives. And to see the criticism lately in the media is such a disservice to them. And I think they, quite frankly, I do believe that they deserve better, but I think that's what we, as a City Council, are here to ensure that that does take place. Well, that was a pretty, that was a pretty healthy discussion.
May I, if you are going to bring Ashley Schrohsheim in, who'd completed the audit of the contract, the ambulance Paramedics Plus's contract, I would let you know that she would be able to answer questions on the contract, not on the outcome of the audit at this point. That will not be made public until the June 29th Audit Committee meeting is, the Audit Committee needs here at first.
Very, that's a very good point. And that is, was my intention, but thank you for clarifying that. It would be just the matters of the contract. It's-
Which she studied.
The results of the audit will be made public on the 29th. Good, good point. Counselor Erickson?
I would just encourage everyone, whether it's the public, us as counselors, to brainstorm your questions. Bring forth your proof. Bring forth everything you have and put it out there in full transparency to ask those tough questions and get the answers that we all need to hear. I think that's really important and, you know, if you're meeting with citizens before and they have issues, bring those concerns on their behalf. I know I certainly have asked questions on behalf of citizens often. And I say usually that's where the best ideas come from, are from the citizens. They're not always my ideas. It's something that somebody's brought forth. And so if we can bring those forward and ask those hard questions and have the key players here, I think that's a benefit for all of us to understand and make sure we're all hearing it at the same time. I'd also encourage to even extend the invite to County Commissioners and even if anyone on Metro Communications wants to come from the Metro Board, great. I know that Counselor Barf, our, excuse me, Commissioner Barf will be back and I'll extend the invitation to him because I, he did explain, he stressed a desire to get together when he returned from vacation to sit down and have this type of conversation. And so I think that's important to have all of those players in here because they do serve a broader area.
Good suggestion. And Commissioner Karski, by the way, was on the council and he was part of the team that was involved in the selection process for this particular contract. It'd be great to have him present and relate his experience with that process as well. Well, that finally brings us to our presentation, our one and only presentation here this afternoon on the City Administration Building Update by Sue Kwan Beck Etten, Director of Central Services. So, welcome, Sue.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Well, we're here to talk about updates on our, on our building project. You've seen this before. This is our rendering of the exterior of the building, focusing on a timeless design. The whole intent is to focus on customer service, a modern office and conference room space, lots of natural light, built for growth to serve the public and our employees for literally decades. As you know, it's constructed on city-owned land. It will be built as very energy-efficient with geothermal and the envelope of the, of the building will be very sound and well-insulated. And then the road diet will help calm traffic along that street and create 40 diagonal parking spaces for us, which we're looking forward to. Just to remind you of some milestone events, we had our groundbreaking six months ago in January of this year. We executed GMP in April and we hope to have the building fully enclosed by November and then the building substantially completed by May of next year. And then Van Epps Park will follow right on the heels of that and hopefully be completed by the middle of the summer. I just wanted to have this slide to bring to your attention all of the different vendors that are involved in this effort. And there's a lot of them, as you can see. They're being led by our architects, Coke Hazard, and then our construction company, Henry Carlson. And on this slide, it shows you, all the ones that are in bold font are all local contractors. So you can see the vast majority are local, which is great. Here's a recent photo that was taken of the construction site with kind of a bird's-eye view from our Eighth and Dakota ramp. If you haven't been up there, I would highly encourage you to go up to the second or third level sometime and take a look down at the activity going on there. Our work continues on schedule with excavation and rock removal and then footings and foundation walls being put in right now. Just a reminder again, our project budget, 21.9 million. And then the amount that we've expended to date would include the following figures, 1.3 million for construction so far, soft costs and professional fees, little over half a million. We haven't expended money at this point for FF and E. So 1.9 million has been expended thus far and so we are on track with our remaining budget of 20 million. What you'll see this summer, over the next several months, will include pouring of the ramp slab to the lower-level garage area, the lower-level slab itself. And then what I'm most looking forward to this summer is structural steel being erected, which will really give you a good idea of the size and shape of the building. Backfill and exterior framing will also be going on this summer. As you know, Van Epps Park improvements are part of this project. And here's a rendering to show you what the look of that park will be. Van Epps Park, as you know, is located between Sixth Street and Seventh Street, along the east side of Minnesota Avenue in downtown Sioux Falls. This park is relatively small, about three-quarters of an acre. And it will be there for, because of its location, it'll be designed in an urban form, offering the beauty of nature with plenty of trees and other landscaping, which will contrast with the typical hard surfaces found in dense urban areas, the concrete and asphalt. So it will provide an aesthetically pleasing view along one of our most heavily traveled roads in the city. Plan improvements for this park include interior walking paths, new lighting, of course, trees, landscaping, a picnic shelter, benches, a drinking fountain, and the majority of the park is open turf area. And again, for that reason. So it's a place where you can go and escape the hard surfaces of the rest of the downtown area and go to a nice green space and enjoy nature. of the rest of the downtown area and, and go to a nice green space and enjoy nature. So my next update to you is planned for the fall of this year. And of course, you can always follow what's going on by looking at our website. And that's the information that I have for you today, unless you have any questions.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thank you for bolding the, the local. I had just wrote on there, how many local, and then you had stated it. So thank you for doing that. When I look at this picture down, I, I'm not entirely sure, but I had heard through the grapevine that there were some issues with rock, that you build downtown, you don't know once you start digging what you're going to get into. And so can you talk a little bit about that? What, what does that look like? Did you run into anything? Does it add any extra cost? And what does that do to the overall budget, if anything?
Sure. And I can give you a high-level explanation. If you'd need more detailed information, Mark is here to answer any additional questions. And we did run into some contaminated soil, which of course takes special handling to remove it. And I would say that these weren't complete unknowns. I mean, anytime that you're, you're digging, you know that there are, there's some risk there, and there are bound to be some variables involved. And that's one of them. Another one being the depth to which we needed to dig to find the good, solid bedrock in order to build the, the footings and foundation on. And we did need to go a little bit lower to find that good, hard bedrock. So it's a combination of soft rock and hard rock. And sometimes you do need, you do need to dig a little further. But Henry Carlson is, you know, well-versed in these types of projects. It did not add any additional expense to our GMP. And it will not affect our overall timeline. We are still on, on track for that May completion date.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the director? Counselor Staley?
Sue, if, if you could review for us and the public, what will be going on on each floor of the building?
Sure. So on first floor, where our plan is to have planning and building services, as well as alcohol licensing and parks administration. On the second floor, we're planning to have engineering. And then Public Works Administration will also be, Mark, second floor? On the second floor. So the idea behind the services offered in the new building is, you know, if you're a developer, if you're a business person, if you're a contractor, this is the place you're going to go to get your permit, to talk about your building plans, that sort of thing. So those, that's why we decided to move planning and building services over to there, because they work very much hand-in-hand with engineering.
Then on the third floor, what will be going on there?
So we're building the third floor as a shell to allow to have growth space in the future. And the plan right now is that is future growth space. So the exterior of that will be built out. It will look as if it's completely done, but it will not be totally built out.
Explain the limitations as to who could be housed in that third floor moving forward? What, what type of entity could rent that space?
It could be another government entity, county or state, for example. You know, we haven't really explored the possibility otherwise, but certainly if the county were interested, or a state agency were interested in leasing space, we would be open to that.
So could we ever rent that to like a legal office or any private business?
Well, I know that there are some constraints in terms of the bonds, in terms of how we can utilize the space because of the way that it's bonded.
So the answer is no?
I don't believe we would.
And then, is there going to be a heated underground garage?
There will be an underground garage level. We'll have 39 parking spaces there, as well as mechanical rooms and some storage.
So heated?
Yes, I believe it will be heated.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director, for the update. Kind of exciting to see walls forming and things taking shape out there. Just curious, the park, which I think's going to be beautiful by the way it looks, I mean, does that slowly come into form and shape along with the building as it goes? Or does that kind of start right when the building's done and?
So the thing is that, my understanding is that they are using it as part of the staging area and as part of the, the site construction. So you really don't want to start building out that park too much until you have substantially completed the building. But we will have our plans already prepared, and we will have things ready to go. And of course, you can't plant too early in the year either. I mean, goodness, we had snow on May 1st this year. So that will be, the weather will be taken into consideration as well.
Yeah, that's kind of what I wondered. It said in the, the goal was July 2018 to be substantially complete. And I'm like, well, that would be pretty impressive to have it looking like that right in that timeline, but.
Yeah. And so that's the thing. I mean, that's, you got to have a target. That's our target. You know, it depends on the weather, though, too. We're not going to plant if it just makes no sense because of the very dry conditions and, you know, 100 degrees or something like that. So we will be prudent with the taxpayer dollars there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Sue, thank you for the update. It's been kind of a long and winding and sometimes a rough transition to get to this point here. But I'm glad we're here. And I know that initially, we had support, and then we didn't have support, and now we're here again today after various things taking place. But what I think I can say is that you do, now that we're at this process, you do have the support of the majority and hope for the best, obviously, for the building as well as for our, our citizens. And going back to Counselor Staley's question, I believe in, in addition to governmental agencies, county, state, federal, would fit into that, federal governmental agencies. And I believe the bonds were structured in a way that would allow for not-for-profit agencies.
Oh, I think you're right. Thank you.
So if the South Dakota Safety Council wanted to lease out the third floor, they could, they could do that. But I don't, it's not going to happen in my lifetime. So, anyway. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that's all the business we have for our informational meeting today. This meeting is adjourned.